Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Preschool District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 19th, 2023. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people of this country. I wish I could have any visible responsibility against this. May I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters related to five particular students and one particular employee? So moved by Mr. Cassidy, seconded by Mr. Flowers. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Hi. Thank you for your patience. The board is returning from executive session and a recess for CPR training. An executive session, we discussed matters relating to five particular students and one particular employee. Moving on to item three, no agenda changes. No, and item four, no reports or discussion items right now. Items requiring court action. Mr. Russ.
Yeah, so I'd just like to congratulate our teachers who are here with us tonight, who will be receiving tenure. I think we have seven or eight, because it was really great. And what happened was, we de-emoted, got the issue adjusted, made a lot of people, we had to cut a lot of programs. So this was a year when we could rehire people and reestablish our programs. And I have to say that the group that's here tonight has done an incredible job restoring those things. And we couldn't be more proud of your work and grateful that you're on our team. And I'll be quite honest, it's not hard, it is hard to achieve tenure in East Aurora, because we have high expectations for all of our employees. And so I'm just thrilled that we can be here today and celebrate. And we'll also do a little bit of celebration in September, when you are official, because you know, you have to walk through the door in September officially to get your tenure. But we're going to celebrate tonight afterwards with some cupcakes as well. So again, congratulations to all of you. And now we're going to announce you one at a time.
Item A. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Courtney Brown, 1.0 FTE, birth to 12th grade, sixth elementary education teacher, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cassidy, seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Congratulations. Item B. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Joshua Dubay, 1.0 FTE, math, seventh to 12th teacher, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Flowers. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Item C. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Emily Krause, 1.0 FTE, special education teacher, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Daniu, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Congratulations. Item D. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Tina Moran, 1.0 FTE, special education teacher, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Prota, seconded by Mr. Flowers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Item E. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Laura Radley, 1.0 FTE, special education teacher, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Daniu, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Item Math. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Casey's LP, 1.0 FTE, elementary education teacher, sixth teacher, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Brunson. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Item G. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Christina, 25, 1.0 FTE, school social worker, as detailed in your agenda. We have a motion. Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Congratulations. It's the most fun we ever had. Item H. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education grant tenure to Erin Wilcox, 1.0 FTE, school counselor, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Improta. Second? Second. Seconded by Mrs. Daniu. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Congratulations to all of our tenure candidates. This is a very exciting day, and we would like to give you all cupcakes.
Look, Camille, I'll just come on over here and we'll...
I always wonder if it's like it's facing itself, so naturally. Yeah.
Notice, Beth, that we did it, we made it as hard for you as possible and get all those motions, because we could have just decided who was going to move and who was going to second any of them. You wouldn't have managed to scramble.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Of course, we always say "thank" because we're filled with talent.
Oh, this is so good. It's got like the white inside. Must start to look like my dog.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. You guys are great hosts. You guys are great. This is awesome. This is definitely... I'll say that. I love it. You're a great host. Right now, I love it. You outdid yourself. We can say it was broad.
Eight times, my friend.
All right. We're done.
We are the same. He knows. She's knowing well. I'm going to sneak out here. I think, um, I think we're going to go Thursday, September 3rd, Thursday afternoon. So I know that I've heard about it.
What are you talking about? I don't understand nothing. Well, make sure enough.
Will they go on? Yeah, and the nationals. Nationals are in New Jersey. Which is all right. The rubber cord. Chatting with water.
We've got to wait a long time. Two forty minutes. Be forever. They race to the floor.
Kim.
I think Ria's got a couple up there.
I'm kidding.
Let's see where I learned.
Okay.
Everyone, we're coming on, doing a bit of our agenda. How they're all sugared up? Thank you. Moving on to item six, superintendent's comments.
Yes, so I'd just like to share, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to go to Huntsville for this rocketry team, selected by NASA, to participate in this nationwide rocketry challenge. And so, so we've done, okay, so, let me just try to think how to do this. So we have this rocketry club who participated in the national competition. Last year, they finished in the top 25, which allowed them to be selected to work with NASA. So they have to go through this extensive process of a sixty day application and a lot of other factors to get selected, and they were. So we're one of thirteen, and the country that was selected was in the state. And the actual launch was this Saturday. I had the good fortune to attend, and we have some here that were there and have worked on this rocket. And what's so amazing about it, there's definitely been some ups and downs in the process. And at one point, when they are testing the rocket, it actually crashed and had to be rebuilt. There were other things that happened along the way that set them back, but they did not give up. And even on the morning of the launch itself, they were preparing the rocket, and then realized that something was understepping. And so they took the rocket apart, right there in the end, under our tent, put it back together, and they had this amazing launch. It was just incredible. And so what I'd like to do now is show you some of the videos from Saturday. Now, that's what will happen, stages to bring the rocket back down to the ground. So I see a landing area. I'll wait till it's...
Is that true? It's spinning.
I see it.
I see it, it's spinning. Your parachute's still nice and comfortable. You might lose it a little bit, you'll see it. Don't blink. It's going to land right, no, maybe it's not going to land right. It's going to land close. It's going to be close, yeah. That drug is so slow.
It was a lot faster last night.
Yeah, why? You mean, actually? There it is.
You can see the initial parachute.
Nice job, guys! So does the seat real?
Yeah.
So it was really an incredible experience. And the six members of the team worked incredibly hard for, gosh, almost ten months. The process has been going on. They worked with an engineer from NASA, thirty-five years veteran at NASA, who guided them through this process. And then they created this really amazing rocket that did exactly what we were hoping to do. So they set criteria, and you have to meet certain criteria for height, how quickly it lands. They had infrared cameras, looked inside the rocket itself. So all of those things have to be met in order for them to go through the process. And so they've just done an incredible job. And here's their interview at the end.
It's the Naval Academy. Now, we have one of our high school teams here, East Aurora High School from New York. Come on in. How's everybody doing today?
We're doing pretty good, pretty comfortable about that launch. That launch was amazing.
Yeah, so tell us about that launch. I can tell you're excited. Went well?
Oh, yeah, it went perfect, flawless. There was no issues at all.
That doesn't often happen in rocketry. Tell us about what this process has been like and challenges that brought you here.
This process has been a lot of work, trust me. We've gone through five full-scale flights. This was actually our fifth right here. But our second full-scale flight, we actually crashed into a tree at 285 miles an hour, because the whole recovery system just didn't act properly. And then the third flight, we only had two charges go off, and that was just the main parachute. So they didn't really like that. So our fourth flight was actually on Saturday, one week ago from today. And then we got approved to fly Monday. So it's been a hectic process.
So determination and resiliency really kind of seems to be the motto of the team.
Yes, yes, definitely. We're a six-member team first year, and we never gave up. We just kept pushing. Don't give up.
That's awesome. So talk to us about your payload. How, what payload did you put in the rocket?
So our payload is nicknamed NIRI-360. It's a near-infrared atmospheric imaging system in 360 degrees. So basically, it visualizes infrared throughout the duration of the flight in 360 degrees and compares it to temperature, humidity, and pressure sensors that are located within the sensor bay.
Oh, that's awesome. So last question for you guys, and I'm going to let you guys celebrate. Anybody back home you want to say hi to, give a shout out to?
Basically, everyone at this point. The whole town of East Aurora has always been supporting us. We've got Moog, they help sponsor us. The Educational Foundation, they help fund us. AW Moore, they helped 3D print our nose cone. And there's so many other people that couldn't be here without them. Dr. Young, our first mentor, and then Vince, our second mentor. It's been a hectic process, but we pushed through, we made it, and we're so glad to be here.
That's awesome. We're so glad to have you, so glad to see you. Big smiles on the faces. Yeah, everyone in East Aurora, New York, thank you so much for being with the team. We truly appreciate it. And I know they do too. Y'all can give a wave to mom and dad and everybody. That is East Aurora High School in New York. Thank you so much, y'all. Congratulations.
I don't want to embarrass him, but Adam is here. He's here with us today, just have him. So it was really, really exciting day. Like, you could see, they were explaining what the infrared system and how complicated it is. Explain what that was, because I didn't really understand it, to be quite honest. But it was really impressive. And for them to compete against, and honestly, the main people that are there are colleges from across the university. And you have teams of thirty, forty, fifty, sixty students that put their rockets together, and our team did it with six. So very, very impressive. So again, congratulations. Yeah, so I...
Legislation?
Uh, no.
Board presidents and board member comments. The policy committee meeting was last week, Tuesday, and you'll have policies that we'll be reviewing later on.
Just to report, we had a good turnout from our community, including lots of school-age kids, parents. I mean, we had average that came to our hands-only CPR class downstairs. So I really like to thank Mr. Librock for doing that, and Mr. Lombardo, and Mr. Roberts, and the board for supporting that. It was a really, really good turnout, and the really, lives are going to be saved because of that. So thank you.
Thank you for coordinating with the team. Mr. Cassidy?
Yeah, I want to echo the congratulations to the Rocket Club, because we had it on in our house so that we could watch it. Unfortunately, we missed the launch live, but then heard the interview and rushed in to catch the interview, which, by the way, of all the interviews that I caught, maybe I'm biased, but it was the best. It was fantastic. And, yeah, just to see them competing against some of the universities. Some of the universities didn't have such great turnouts. The outcomes weren't great for them. So I think flawless is the word Thomas used. I'd say that's what they got. So that was great. Just one other thing, I got a chance to go last week to the middle school talent show, and I won't steal this under, but I'll say that it was a great turnout, and it was really... It was a really great show. And I would give special props to the three MCs, because while they weren't part of the talent show, they did an awesome job. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Mr. Flowers?
Nothing today.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Brunson?
Yeah, a couple of things. We had a meeting of the facilities committee, but rather than report on it, we have an update coming up later in the agenda, so I'll comment at that time. The other thing is, in addition to what you're seeing here on the screen with the Rocket Club, I'd like to give a shout out to Moog for providing a reception for the folks, the team. Was it after the launch or before? It was before. So there were some pictures of that as well. And I think it's really great when a local business can be supportive, and of course, the educational foundation as well. So it's a great job.
Mrs. Daniu?
Yep. Can I mention one? I forgot. Also, for, maybe you'll mention it as well, but the Pops concert was held last week with the middle school and the high school. And it was, it was so much fun, but I don't think I've been to a concert where there was a standing ovation. That's how much fun that the audience had. So the students were just, every student that participated, was excellent. And of course, your instruction was excellent as well. Thank you very much.
Administrators' comments? Are there any administrators who have anything to share this evening?
We're just gearing up for our author study that's coming up on May 11th and 12th. It's going to be a great week. We have a whole spirit week, where we're going to be having crazy hair and pajamas on, all in honor of our special visitor, Zachariah O'Hara. Each student is going to receive one of his hardcover books, courtesy of our wonderful, amazing, supportive PTO. So stay tuned. I'm sure it's going to be a great event.
Thank you, Ms. Pantoja. That sounds like lots of fun at Parkdale. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
So two things. Mr. Cassidy already mentioned it, but the talent show, I unfortunately wasn't there. But Mr. Librock explained to me how awesome it was, how the MCs were great. And I'm always impressed with how middle school-age students can get on stage in front of hundreds of people and just have the courage to go out there and perform. So very proud of them, even though I wasn't there. And the reason why I wasn't there is I was with thirty-seven of our fifth through eighth graders in Washington DC for four days. And we took our student council, and I just wanted to thank Mrs. Cook and Mr. Dayton. The two of them are the student council leaders, and they just did an exceptional job of planning this trip. And Officer Longboat, who went with us, he was incredible. I think it was eye-opening for him to spend four days with thirty-seven adolescents, but he did a great job. And Mrs. Wartabender, our school psychologist, and Miss Gibbons, our nurse. We just had a really good time. But the most incredible part of the trip for me was at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. We were there for the changing of the guards, and it's just an incredible experience that we've never been. But as we finished, we found out that an honor flight from Erie County, from Buffalo, sponsored by the Bills, was just pulling up. And so we happened to be there at the same time that they were getting off of their bus. And the coolest thing was our thirty-seven students, without being asked or anything, ran right up to the bus. They started helping to pull the wheelchairs out from under the bus, get them set up for the veterans. And they shook every single one of those seventy-some veterans' hands and thanked them for their service. One of the gentlemen was 103 years old from World War II, and he was telling them stories and giving them advice on how to live to 103. The cool thing was, Reed Ferguson from the Bills was there, and he was interacting with our kids, and he was great, having a great time. But it was neat for me to see how the focus was not about him and about, you know, some of the coaches that were there, it was all about the veterans and what they've done for our country and the time that they served. And really, just to make it memorable experience for both the veterans and for our thirty-seven students. I really don't think that they will ever forget that moment the rest of their life. So it was pretty cool.
Sounds amazing. Thank you for your presentation. Anyone else? Mr. Roberts?
I just wanted to bring your attention, a number of our faculty members and students were recognized over the past couple of weeks. And the first one is really unique. RIT, Rochester Institute of Technology, selects outstanding undergraduate scholar award winners. So they're the top 1% of undergraduate students. And that's based on academic excellence, giving back to the community, volunteer work, conducting research, and engaging in collaborative work experiences. Now, what I love about this award is those award winners are allowed to select and honor one of their high school teachers who was an influence on them in their scholar or in their academic careers or professional careers. We had two East Aurora graduates who were selected for this. You might remember the names Catherine Jenzchevsky and Emma Orr. What made it even more unique is they both selected our technology teacher, Ryan Wall. So the professor who leads this award and scholarship ceremony said it was the first time ever that they've had two graduates from the same high school and recognizing and selecting the same teacher. So I thought a unique recognition, well-deserved recognition, not only for our graduates, but for Ryan Wall and the influence that he has had on our graduates. So that was number one.
He's also the advisor for the Rocket Club.
The second thing I wanted to... The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is the Chamber of Commerce had their seventy-sixth Business Recognition Award Ceremony a few weeks ago. And it was a, a, a night that was super special for East Aurora High School, because we had one group, uh, win an award and one individual win an award. The group was the Blue Devil Unified Club. They won the civics award, uh, for all the work that they've done with unified basketball and with unified bowling. So they recognize us, the advisors and students. Um, and again, want to just tell you, because two of them were just on their tenure, Laura Radley and Emily Krause were on stage being recognized, Mrs. Arnold, Mrs. Kavino, and our SRO, Steve Cartwright. Uh, we also had some student representatives, uh, to accept that award. The second award that night was the Educator of the Year Award, a prestigious award, uh, that was given to this year Lisa Markioli, our business teacher. Uh, not only for her work with DECA and the evolution of the courses that were offered or are being offered at the high school by the introduction of the design this past year. So well-deserved recognition for all of those individuals. And then two final statements. I apologize. I want to thank the Educational Foundation. Um, they, last week, I think it was, Mr. Brunson, um, gave a substantial grant to, uh, the high school through Mr. Hanson and Mr. Shally and their sustainable agriculture program. So the foundation is going to allow us to start this program. We have many, many seniors who have already, uh, enrolled in the class, and now we have the funds to get that off the ground. And, and we're super thankful to the foundation again for supporting, uh, this new initiative. And then finally, the drama production is this weekend. Uh, Saturday and Sunday matinee, so if you're interested in seeing the talents, many of them sitting here, uh, in front of me, uh, this weekend at the high school, please, uh, purchase a ticket. The doors open at the door, uh, Saturday night at seven and Sunday at two o'clock.
Thank you very much for sharing. No visitors coming in? Nope. Nope, we're good. Thank you for getting your steps in. Appreciate it. Anyone else this evening? Thank you. We have no visitor comments. I will just remind the board that we received, uh, an actual snail mail letter from Mr. Lowry, uh, requesting we consider voting for him in his candidacy for his... Uh, moving on to item eleven. Reports and discussion items, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget and property tax report card.
Okay, uh, we're waiting to interview these people who are with us today. Uh, this is hopefully the final proposal for the... Here's the agenda. I won't go through it all, but these are all the things that we'll cover over the next twenty minutes. Again, you know, this process takes a long time. We basically start in the fall, uh, preparing, um, for our budget vote in May. And again, what drives our decision-making is our, our values and our vision. Uh, learning excellence, respectful relationship, effective communication, and continuous improvement. And again, that goes all based around the needs of our students, um, and our staff. So FEMA update, this really hasn't changed at all. We still, we've received four hundred and six, four hundred and six thousand dollars in FEMA reimbursements from things that happened during, uh, the COVID era. Uh, we're still waiting on the distribution of meals, and, uh, that's in its second appeal, and we haven't heard back. Uh, so reserve funding, again, we kept this on, um, on the agenda, uh, since the beginning of the presentations, because we're really required to keep it out front, uh, for the public as well as the board. Uh, where we may place, um, reserve funds if we have extra money that's available, that'll be determined really over the summer. Um, and we've looked at, uh, ERS and TRS, uh, the liability reserve. We've also talked about using some money from technology to buy some new, uh, Chromebooks. Uh, we use money also from the Capital Reserve, uh, to fund this latest, uh, facilities project. Uh, so that'll probably be a place where we want to start to refund for, uh, to replenish for the next project as well. So the one house budgets, again, this hasn't changed a whole lot. We're still waiting. Typically, we're shooting for, uh, April first, uh, date for the budget to be passed, but here we are on, uh, April nineteenth and still no notice. Uh, they are getting closer. There is some movement. We're hearing some bits and pieces, but nothing significant. So here are the issues. Again, still public safety and bail reform, acceleration of payments to public hospitals, uh, New York Housing Compact, and then universal school meals for us. The, the only thing that really impacts us is the universal school meals. We're really hoping that that moves through. There's a lot of support from the Senate and the Assembly. Uh, but we're really hoping that that will, uh, definitely give us a shot in the arm. Uh, again, budget neutral, like, we go through the process and we, we identify costs and expenses and, and where the revenues are coming from. And sometimes we talk about things being neutral to the budget, and there's different reasons for that. And this basically explains why something would be budget neutral. So these are, these are some of the circumstances, um, but it's, it's not an exact science. So, uh, we try to give some, some parameters around that. So budget priorities, again, we've gone through this over the last several months. Um, uh, building subs will, we're going to use some of the federal stimulus money to support those, um, building subs in Parkdale, the middle school, and the high school, but they are not included in the budget. So again, we're going to use the federal money for this year and see how the budget goes for next year. Uh, it's a big help because our, you know, our sub situation isn't great. It has improved. It certainly isn't great, and I know that the principal will rely on the building subs every single day, uh, to cover classes. Uh, here again, again, everything else has been moved over. Uh, we've made, had discussions about all of these things over the last several months. Nothing's really changed. We have to coordinate, again, we're going to move in a different direction, uh, for the coming school year, so we're working out the details. Uh, Mrs. Lyons and I are working out the details with the, uh, with the consultant, and it will be moved over, uh, hopefully, uh, after July one. So here we go, appropriations. Uh, when we look at appropriations, we're going to talk a little bit about this, because I, I've received some information since the last time we, um, we met, and I'd like to share some of that, uh, with you at this time. Uh, but this hasn't changed since the last time we were together, uh, but I'm going to suggest a small change, uh, because of some of the information that I recently received. And here's the revenue budget. You can see in the projected lines for twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, it's forty million, forty-three million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. And they had a lines with the, uh, particular appropriations of forty-three million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. So before we go, uh, let me just see where I'm here. Okay, so, um, I, I've received some information. We may have some changes to, uh, requirements around student services. Uh, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the levy. We set the levy, um, at about two point five four at the last meeting. And I'm going to talk to you about possibly adjusting that, um, uh, increasing the levy, actually. Increasing levy by about fifty thousand dollars to help us cover those costs. And so what would happen here is, uh, the revenue and the appropriation budget would go from forty-three million, seven fifty-two to forty-three million, eight oh two, seven, seven sixty-two. And so that would be the adjustment on the revenue side as well as the appropriation side. And again, that's to cover some unexpected costs we may have, uh, with some, uh, some program adjustments that are going to kind of come our way for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So again, that number there would now change from forty-three million, seven fifty-two, um, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars to forty-three million, eight hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Posting up a lot way, again, this hasn't changed. We're looking at Parkdale. We've got some good news on the replacement of the phone system. We're going to be able to save some money there. So that will allow us to do some of the additional concrete work and, and camera work that we were hoping to do, uh, as part of this project. Uh, the tax cap levy, uh, limit calculation again. Um, so here it is. Uh, we said that we were going to set the limit, uh, the levy limit at two point five four. Uh, we're going to make an adjustment to the levy by fifty thousand dollars. So it will be, um, twenty-six million, um, two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. And so that will go, this chart right here, um, so we look at, um, the tax levy, uh, we ran three point one three. Now we'll leave, uh, two hundred thousand dollars under the cap, so the new, uh, levy will be two point seven four. Under the proposal of adding that additional fifty thousand dollars. So here's the tax rates. Um, Mr. George, you want to talk about this at all?
Um, they're estimated tax rates, um, based on going a hundred and fifty thousand under the levy. So these will change again, um, it's on the previous slide. Um, and they're just estimates, um, because we don't have all the information we need to do tax rates until August.
And so instead of being thirteen point oh four, it's going to be thirteen point oh seven, uh, with the adjustment to the, to the tax levy. Again, so here's the projected budget. Currently, our budget is forty-one million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Um, this is going to be an increase in the budget. Um, actually, it's going to be two million, uh, five hundred and six thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. The proposed, um, uh, budget for, uh, May sixteenth will be forty-three million, eight hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Uh, if we kind of shoot to the bottom, um, the, uh, I can't see. So the tax impact will line up full value houses about thirty-two dollars, and a house assessed at one hundred thousand, that's what we've always used. Um, house set, assessed at, um, one hundred thousand dollars will be a tax increase of a hundred and twenty-two dollars per year. So now that will be adjusted slightly, because we've added additional fifty thousand dollars, um, to, uh, the levy. So, um, do you have any idea? I would imagine it's a few dollars.
I probably have it here somewhere. It's a few dollars. It's not a lot.
Well, it was only three cents per thousand on, on the levy, so it's...
Yeah.
Not a lot.
It's not a lot, but it will adjust a little bit.
So again, here we look at our fiscal accountability. Um, we look at, uh, East Aurora, like, what we're spending per pupil. They changed this formula. We talked a little bit about this in, in the school year. They used to break out, uh, general ed and special education. They don't do that any longer, but you can see here, our, across per pupil, it's about sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars compared to the rest of the schools in Erie County, which are a little bit over eighteen thousand. And then you can see all, uh, New York City school districts, um, were considerably below the twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars that is being spent, um, across the state. So again, we really think that, you know, we're, we're getting a lot for the money that we're spending. You know, our kids are doing well. There's a lot of opportunities and programs that are available for them. And that is, uh, continuously changing based on new needs and interests. And so our, our administrators and our teachers do a really fantastic job creating new opportunities. I think it's interesting for them. So the budget resolution would read, um, actually, forty-three million, eight hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars, uh, by adjusting the, um, the levy. And, uh, again, we are also have a second proposition to use seventy-five thousand dollars from the, uh, technology reserve uh, to support the replacement of, of, uh, Chromebooks at, uh, fifth and ninth grade. And that's about it. Here we are, April nineteenth, uh, goes by quickly. Uh, there's some things that, uh, the business office and this George has to do between now and our next meeting on May third, and then we vote, um, on May sixteenth. Any questions?
Questions? Um, for the adjustments, could we, you know, do you want to just back to post the meeting? Just want to make sure we get that.
Yeah, so before we, uh, we post it, we'll definitely change all of them.
Will there be, um, similar to what we did for the capital funds project, where there was a, like, a community to learn, uh, learn more? Is there a way for the community to ask more? Do, like, let's say they, they, we approved this, and then they're like, oh, I have a question about that. Who, what do they do?
Sure. They could come to the board meeting on, on May third. You know, that would probably be the best way to, to address the board. Uh, so if they could come and they want to, uh, share their, uh, public comment, they could ask any questions they want or any points of clarification of that.
Okay.
That's the, the hearing.
Yeah, this hearing too, right.
Great. Thank you.
The comment period specifically for...
For that.
For that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? Comments? Very much? All right. Uh, moving on to item B, the capital facilities project?
Yes, so we, we continue to meet with our architects and engineers, um, as the project's moving forward. Uh, we are starting to make some decisions around, um, this building in terms of phase one and, and our need to, uh, make the summits in time so that the, we got the business document, and that we can get our construction in the spring of next year. So, um, I asked, um, so the business office will be sending along a long-term plan and how that's being adjusted to you after every one of our meetings. So you'll receive this, um, the head of order will receive this, um, yeah, so that you can kind of monitor it as it goes along, because it does, because there are adjustments. You know, every time we meet, um, things kind of happen or don't. They get delayed. Um, rarely do they move forward more quickly, uh, but, uh, so those things do, do impact, uh, what we're doing right now. We see a delay in the approval process, uh, so that's a little unfortunate, but we, we're ahead of it. And, you know, we've been working closely with the team, and they've done a really excellent job of bringing samples in and preparing different, um, um, like, uh, options for us to select. So we've been working through that process, because we're going to be working on the classrooms here, uh, in the middle school, as well as the, uh, restrooms, uh, and, and the rest of the entire building. So that'll be done, uh, next spring and summer. So that's pretty exciting. Uh, we're also planning, then, the next part of the process will be, we actually, believe it or not, have to start planning this summer uh, for the, the twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five, summer of twenty-twenty-five, because there's a lot of, um, adjustments. And like this, this area right here will be, will be completely, so there's a lot of construction that will actually be happening in the second phase of this. And so we're really starting to talk about that now, what it will all look like. Actually, working with the, uh, library media specialists to get their input on how this space should be reconstructed. And that will actually be happening this June before they leave for the summer. Um, so, uh, we're also looking at a plan for pre-K, uh, where does that look like long-term in terms of creating a, a K, pre-K wing uh, that's appropriate for, for all of our students, you know? Absolutely fantastic. Uh, we move very quick. It's adjusting to very little, very young, small students. Uh, there's a lot to it. And we want to make sure that they have the proper facilities and the proper, uh, supports and supplies. Uh, so we're working through that process right now. I'm going to be meeting with Mr. George and Mr. Ritzloff, uh, let's see, all the teachers in pre-K, uh, and, uh, kindergarten, as well as Mrs. Pantoa, uh, Mrs. Parker will be with us as well. So to talk about how does that transition look right now, in the immediate future, as well as, you know, one, three, five years down the road. So that's some of the things that we're talking about. Um, Mr. Brunson, I know you wanted to add some stuff.
Well, no, I think you've covered it pretty well. I, I just, for, for those who are, are seeing this thing for the first time, or, or or not sure they saw it before, uh, I'd just point out that, that the, uh, the long column under twenty-twenty-two is the current project. And the long column at the end that says twenty-twenty-five are all things that are not funded, but that may be needed in the future. So, you, so it's, even, so the, well, this column that says twenty-twenty-two consists of all the things that will be done over a two- or three-year period of construction, uh, extending into twenty-twenty-five. But the, but the col- the, the list of projects on the right are all things that are, uh, considered important, but haven't yet been determined as to how they might be funded.
And if you look at those two numbers, we have, our project currently is just a little bit over twenty-two million dollars. And the needs that we weren't able to meet are nineteen million, so. It's never ending.
So there you go.
So, and I'm sure that number, nineteen million, will grow over the next three to five years. So, you know, we're just trying to be prepared, looking down the road, like, what we need to do to save and those kinds of...
Some of those things may get, may get done, uh, if, if they rise to an emergency situation through the repair reserve or, or redirecting funds that were intended for something else. So, uh, there are, uh, there's flexibility for, for dealing with important issues that arise that, uh... But it's really good that they have, uh, examined all these spaces and all this equipment, and they've determined, uh, what sorts of things we might want to plan for down the road, uh, as we, as we move on. Because as we retire debt, the prudent thing to do is to, uh, keep the facilities in good condition. It's one of the very few ways that we can increase our state aid. Uh, we don't, we, we can lobby to try to get them to send us more aid. But if, if we do, uh, a wonderful facility for universal pre-K, we will receive two-thirds of the cost of that, uh, back from the state. So, the, uh, and without the need to, uh, change the legislation or, or convince, uh, our elected representatives that they should go out a little bit more money. So, so I think we have... So, so I think we have, we've, we've got a good process for analyzing needs and then in a planned, thoughtful way, preparing to do it in the most fiscally responsible way as the years progress.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Utilizing the state aid is essential. Planning ahead is essential, and I think it will also be helpful as we, as we look ahead. It's very nice to have it in a grid instead of just sort of out there in the void. We can also watch how the, the things that might seem small and inconsequential suddenly become an entire capital project, and the costs will only escalate, so.
Sure. Well, you know, this, this reminds me of the fiscal one we get from Mr. Membreddy and Mr. George on a regular basis. And it's just, it's just great as a board member to be able to see a picture on a single page that gives you a feeling for an important aspect of the program and how it's progressed.
Mr. Brunson, did they say what the turnaround time is? You said it's a little bit delayed in terms of?
It was like 15 weeks, 16 weeks?
No, it keeps going up a couple of weeks at a time.
So it's, you know, three to four months, four and a half months. So we, we dealt with a lot worse than that in the past, but it was, geez, it was like six weeks at one time. Then it's 10, and now it's 14, now it's 16. So it's going to creep up, and probably this is they continue to seem to lose people who are doing the evaluations and also the expedited process that they used to offer to district people. So that has all impacted the turnaround time.
At this point in time, it's still on schedule. The, so they're, they're intending to be, make their submittals in June, I believe. And if, unless it has significantly deteriorated since then, we should be able to go out in the late fall early.
Very nice time, yeah, that's great. Thank you. That's great, and that still gives you leeway. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Moving on to item 12. Is there anyone who wishes to remove a consensus item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, they have a motion to remove the consensus item.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blowers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 6-0. I'm going to make them wait 30 seconds. Thank you all for being here. You're welcome to escape, your hour is up.
I didn't even know they were here. I'll report that message. Fascinated by the budget.
I was watching an episode of Barney Miller.
My gosh.
The administrator of the Rikers Island prison in New York decided it was too crowded in the morning. A couple of hundred prisoners. It's a similar thing, you guys can all go now. Barney Miller's great. Al Lyndon, what a guy. Put it out as a song and dance man, you know, plays the clarinet and saxophone. Runway music. But as Barney Miller, he was this great forwarder. Good leader.
That's a capital lay. Then I got to the.
He's still live too, he's about nine years old.
Okay.
It's all, it's all in, oh, right, sorry, sorry, I thought it was two things, but it's all in one.
Oh, Sean, thank you.
One left.
Wondering if I was going to get a seat today.
You can spread out. All right. Item 13, items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving the 2023 child support order to both the administrative budget as detailed in your attachment. Moved by Mr. Brunson. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. Nothing this year, Dan? All right, all those in favor?
It's all answered right here. Everything you want to know about the Bozzi's administrative budget, I think.
Right there, and that shiny hefty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post abstentions carried 6-0. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education, sorry, cast one vote for each of the individuals listed to fill the five vacancies on the Erie 2 Chautauqua Cataragas vote shows the Board of Education as listed in your agenda.
So moved.
Seconded by Mrs. Daniels. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions carried 6-0. I see the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education nominate David Lowry as a candidate to appear in the, you know, candidate for the position of Ms. Area 1, Area 1 Director as detailed in your agenda.
Almost.
Moved by Mr. Brunson. Seconded by Mr. Blowers. Discussion.
Hardworking gentleman.
He's a hardworking gentleman, and yes, I thank him for his continued service and stepping it up to the very next level. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions carried 6-0. Item D, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education perform a first reading to adopt the policies luckily known as EA 6,000, supplanting the current section 7,000 of the existing policy manual as detailed in your agenda. Someone move by Mrs. Daniels.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion.
Well, I mean, congratulations to Mr. Membreddy and the Policy Committee for this. This is monumental work. I know, because I did it once 25 years ago. And it was a lot of work then, and it's a lot of work now.
Thank you for your recognition, Mr. Brunson. You are absolutely correct, Mr. Membreddy is doing an enormously heavy lift on behalf of the district. And there's a lot of engagement all the way around, so thank you.
That was like 160 pages this one, is that what it was?
130.
Hell, like 160.
I think hats on the back to the board members. Thanks for the Easter reading, 100 and some pages.
I appreciate that there were, the highlights, though, the colored highlights, that was really helpful, so thank you for that.
Mr. Membreddy is doing a lion's share, he's doing the work and also helping us through the process very much. It's very easy to follow what the changes are. Thank you all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post abstentions carried 6-0. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education perform a first reading to retire the policies luckily known as the current section 7,000 of the policy manual as listed in your agenda.
Almost.
Moved by Mr. Brunson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Fight over there. Discussion.
Just briefly, I, I would just like to acknowledge the hard work of past superintendents and past administrators and past board members in writing these ones that were retiring. They, they, there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that went into many of these policies. They, they weren't all easy adopts. They, there were some controversial issues. And they, they had to take a lot of time and discussion and compromise to, to reach consensus to approve these. And so as we bury them, I, I send out my acknowledgement to those who, who wrote them initially.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. I think that's a fine acknowledgement of the history. The recognition that the work that the Policy Committee is doing now to bring the policies up to date is essential moving forward. But certainly, all the things that have led to the district's success over the past decades have come from the policy work that was done in the past. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Yeah, and I would say too, Mr. Brunson around that same thing, he says they, they gave us a starting point. Yeah, so a lot of this, you know, were pulled from this and then adjusted and modified to meeting requirements and things like that. But you're right, it's.
It was important work to do it.
It was less technology, so a lot of that was handwritten and done on a typewriter and computer, so.
We're processors, we're lucky.
Yes, right.
Thank you. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 6-0. Item F, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Amber Greig, 1.0 FTE school nurse as detailed in your agenda. They have a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Mrs. Improta, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion.
Well, just to acknowledge it again for, for the adjustments that the board made and the administration made in, in contractual language in order to get good recruits and be able to fill these positions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post abstentions carried 6-0. Item G, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the New York State Child Nutrition Audit and Corrective Action Plan as detailed in your attachment. They have. Seconded by Mrs. Improta. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions carried 6-0. Item H, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the contract between Buffalo Construction Consultants and the East Aurora Union Free School District for the services performed for the 2022 tactical investment partner. They have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cassidy.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Brunson, discussion?
This is all reviewed by our attorneys. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post abstentions carried 6-0. They have a motion to approve, they have a motion to approve the resolution stated April 19th, 2023, declaring the district's proposed capital outlay project to be taken to action under Seeker as detailed in your agenda.
So moved.
Cassidy? Second. Seconded by Mrs. Daniels. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 6-0. Item K, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education adopt. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education adopt the 2023, 2024 proposed general fund budget and the amount of 43 million, 802,762 dollars. And the property tax report card as detailed in your attachment and modify.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blowers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. Thank you for your ongoing hard work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions carried 6-0. Is there any new business to come aboard board? What in the world?
I wasn't going to say any.
All right then. Item 15, the next regularly scheduled board meeting includes budget public hearing. They have Mrs. Improta, that is Wednesday, May 3rd, right here in the middle school. And another meeting on Wednesday. No, that is Tuesday. Tuesday, Tuesday, thank you. Tuesday, May 16th, which is also the election and budget vote. Those are open all the long day, the 16th. Other conferences and workshops are listed in your agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to add anything to a future agenda or any other business that can play a role?
Can you say one comment on B?
Absolutely.
Depending on the outcome of the election, I'm, I am interested in that leadership in education event in July. The agenda is really good and really appropriate and timely, but I'll let you know after May sometime.
Thank you very much. With Ms. Casey and I exchanged messages about those Ms. events, so you can send your request to register. There we go. Questions, follow. They have a motion to adjourn. Someone move by Mrs. Daniels. Seconded by Mrs. Daniels. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 6-0. Without team.